Good evening and welcome to the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors meeting, April 10th, 2014. We're gonna have a little show for you. Mr. O'Donnell, could you get the light?
Hello and welcome to this North Penn news update. I am Rebecca Rosenblatt. In the past week, the North Penn School District has been notified. They have received several prestigious awards and recognitions. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency has named the district a 2014 Energy Star Partner of the Year. This is the second year in a row for the district to earn the Partner of the Year designation. In addition, North Penn is also receiving the Pennsylvania Governors Award for Environmental Excellence, for environmental performance and innovation. The North Penn High School has once again been named an outstanding high school, based on the Washington Post annual national rankings. This is the fourth year in a row NPHS has been recognized by the Washington Post for student achievement in the Advanced Placement Program. In addition, the North Penn High School Student Government Association has been awarded a 2013 National Gold Council of Excellence Award by the National Association of Student Councils. This is the third consecutive year the SGA has received this recognition. NPHS Future Business Leaders of America Advisor Linda Westerland was also recently named to the FBLA Advisor Wall of Fame for the Phi Beta Lambda Chapter. This recognition is specifically created for advisors and state chairs who have made a difference and have contributed 20-plus years of service. The Office of School and Community Engagement received several awards from the Pennsylvania School Public Relations Association. The Office won the highest honor, an Award of Excellence, for the 2013 NPSD Annual Report and the 2013-2014 Activities Calendar. MP-TV received an Award of Honor for the Power Save Energy Show, and the MP Educational Foundation also received an Award of Honor for the Year-end Solicitation Letter. And North Penn Junior Harrison Barclay has been awarded an all-expense-paid summer study trip to Germany after scoring in the 95th percentile on the Level 4 2014 National German Exam. Harrison is one of 44 German-language students selected from the U.S. to receive the award. A huge congratulations goes out to all of the North Penn staff and students involved in these recognitions for the North Penn School District. Your hard work and dedication is truly appreciated. Finally, we are pleased to announce that North Penn Television now has closed captioning on our Comcast Channel 28 and Verizon Channel 29. The introduction of this service provides more accessibility to all video programming to our community. To view closed captioning, just press the closed captioning button on your TV or cable remote. If you missed your favorite show on MP-TV, remember to log onto youtube.com/NPTV for all of our programming 24 hours a day. For North Penn News, I'm Rebecca Rosenblatt. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly-scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. This is usually our favorite part of meetings. We're gonna have a chance to do some recognition and some proclamations tonight, so I'm gonna turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are pleased this evening to recognize students, and it's just so great to see the support in the audience from our parents. The first group of students we'd like to recognize this evening are from the girls' swimming and diving and the boys' swimming and diving teams. And with us this evening, we have Coach Jeff Fakish.
Hello and thank you.
One of the wonderful things about this year's swimming and diving program for both the boys and the girls' side is the team unification that's occurred. Combining both programs to train together is a huge undertaking and sometimes does not always work out the best way, but the student athletes that are in front of you this evening are representative of how much, when a team comes together, you can accomplish almost anything. For the girls' side, I'm gonna recognize them first. They were the Suburban One Continental Conference Champions, the PIAA District One Champions, and at the PIAA State Championship Meet, they finished in third place. The following students are being recognized for their accomplishments at the district meet, winning the championships. First up is Amy Bauer. She participated in the 200 freestyle, the 100 freestyle. She was a member of the 200 freestyle relay and the 400 freestyle relay. Leah Brown, who is not here, was the 50 freestyler, 100 fly, 200 medley relay, and the 200 freestyle relay. Olivia DiStefano, 50 freestyle, 100 backstroke, 200 medley relay, and the 200 freestyle relay. Kalen Evans, 200 IM, 100 backstroke, 200 freestyle relay, 400 freestyle relay. Heather Hartman, 200 freestyle, 500 freestyle. Julie Kraut, not here this evening, 200 IM, 500 freestyle. Caroline Miller, also not here this evening, 200 IM, 100 breaststroke. Erin O'Neill, 100 breaststroke, 100 freestyle, 200 medley relay, 400 freestyle relay. Kat Perkins, not here this evening, 200 freestyle. Shannon Quinn, 100 breaststroke. Tara Rogers, 200 freestyle, 500 freestyle, 200 medley relay, 400 freestyle relay. Madison Tanis in diving, fourth place at districts and sixth place at the PIAA State Championships. Marie Acapino, second at districts and third at states. All of the ladies that I've mentioned here were the PIAA District One 2014 Swimming and Diving Champions.
I'm gonna ask you guys to come through and let the administration and the full board congratulate you. And Coach, could you join us again for three times?
Sure.
Congratulations again. Congratulations again.
Well done.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. Congratulations again. Good job. Okay, thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Please another round of applause for that.
Okay, up next, I would like to recognize the boys' swimming and diving program. This year's boys' program is probably the largest team that North Penn has ever hosted in the history of its program. In front of you, we have 21, well, being recognized this evening are 21 members of the 50-member roster. The boys' team was also the Suburban One Continental Conference Champions, the PIAA District One Champions, and at the PIAA State Championship Meet, the boys' team finished ninth overall. Up first, we're gonna recognize Ian Bowlin-Bentner as a diver. He placed fifth at districts, and he was 17th at states. Brett Else, he was on our 200 freestyle relay, he was 100 freestyler, 200 freestyle, and the 400 free relay. Harrison Freel, 200 individual medley, 100 breaststroke. Jeffrey Gagnon, he was sixth at districts and he placed fifth at states in diving. David Grove, he was in the 50 freestyle and the 100 freestyle. Shane Hennessy, who's not here, also in the 50 freestyle and the 100 freestyle. Bryce Hoak, up next in diving, placed 11th at districts and was also recognized for his participation at states. Alex Holland in the breaststroke. Aaron Jordan in the 100 butterfly, but he is not here this evening. Liam Kelly, the 50 freestyle, 100 freestyle, 200 freestyle relay, and the 400 freestyle relay. Michael Kern, 200 freestyle and the 500 freestyle. Thanas Kontrubes, 200 freestyle, 500 freestyle, 200 freestyle relay, and the 400 freestyle relay. Jonathan Krail, the 200 medley relay, the 200 IM, and the 100 breaststroke. Gregory Nylinger, the 200 medley relay, the 50 freestyle, the 100 back, and the 200 freestyle relay. I'm sorry, Quinn. Alphabetically, I skipped Quinn Mitchell. Quinn Mitchell in diving, he was 10th at districts and he got 10th at states. Up next is Cole Palumbo in the 500 freestyle and the 100 back. Jacob Schellinger, 200 medley relay, 50 freestyle, and the 100 butterfly. Aaron Cisco, who is not here with us this evening, is being recognized for his role as captain of this team. Corey Smith, the 200 medley relay, the 200 IM, and the 100 backstroke. Kyle Supko, the 200 IM and the 500 free. And Ryan Yocum in the 200 freestyle. The boys in front of you are your PIAA District One 2014 Swimming and Diving Champions. We're gonna walk through and shake their hands, guys. Again.
If you wanna take a moment to join somebody, go ahead, but as they exit, we'd like to talk about, we take a great pride in doing so many great things, and one of the things we like to spend your tax dollars on is a big cabinet for more awards, which we have done in the past. So when we run out of space, we'll buy another one, because we got plenty of space at the high school to put them on.
All right, the next group we'd like to recognize is the North Penn High School Girls' Winter Track, and with us this evening, we have Richard Swanker.
Yeah, come on in. Tonight, I'll be presenting two relay teams that placed at the indoor state meet. The 4x8 team placed fifth, and the 4x4 team placed eighth. First of all, we have Phoebe Klausert. She was the anchor leg of the 4x8 relay team in our sophomore scorer award. Next, we have Leanna Dean. She's a junior. She got a Most Improved Award, and she was the third leg of the 4x4 relay team. Next person is not here tonight, that's Brianna Mangini. She's a senior, and she was our leadoff leg of the 4x8. The next one that we have is Uche Wogugu. She was, she's a freshman, and she led off our 4x4. Next one is Ally Valente. She's a junior. She was on the 4x8 third leg and ran the second leg of the 4x4 and the MVP for the indoor track team this year. Next is Melanie Velasic. Melanie got the Senior Award. She is a senior, and she ran the second leg of the 4x8. And the last one is Michaela Velasic. That's Melanie's sister. She's a freshman, and she got the freshman award this year, and she ran part of the 4x4, the anchor leg of the 4x4. And that's it.
It's now our pleasure to recognize the North Penn High School Boys' Winter Track Team, and with us this evening, we have Coach Jay Jones.
Good evening, and it's my pleasure to introduce these three outstanding young men. We have four who medaled at the indoor state championship. Ryan Tonga Jr. could not be here tonight. He's actually doing some community service tonight in volunteering. The first young man, outstanding young man, headed to Lehigh. He placed eighth in the mile, also ran a leg on the 4x8, which took fourth, Ryan Grace. Next young man, also outstanding young man. He was on the 4x8, took fourth. He's headed to Westchester. This is Joe Laconi. And last, but definitely not least, Brian Piscatelli. He's headed to either Penn State or Drexel, hasn't decided, but either way, he's an outstanding student. Either one is a great choice. Brian Piscatelli. Just on a quick note, it's absolutely my pleasure to work with these outstanding young men. I'd be hard-pressed to find three better examples of what a student athlete should be, so just wanted to say that, too.
It is. We're also pleased to recognize members of the wrestling team, and with us this evening, we have Coach Robert Shetzel.
I'd like to thank the school board, any administration, for honoring all the student athletes tonight. Our first wrestler is Jeffrey Remel. When he came to us as a freshman, he went zero and three. He didn't even get a varsity letter. So he devoted his next three years at the high school towards wrestling. He wrestled all summer, this past summer. He had a, this year's record was 32 and 9. He won leagues, he won districts, and he took second at regionals, and he qualified for states. His career record was 84 and 34. Jeffrey Remel. Our next wrestler is Alex Price. His record this year was 30 and 6. He also won leagues, he won districts, he won regionals, and placed fifth at states. Both of these young men went to states last year, and they did qualify, and Alex did take a fifth place this year. It's been 11 years since North Penn has had somebody join the 100-win club. And Alex, his record was 117 and 39. Alex Price.
We're gonna congratulate each of you, and Coach, please join us at the end. Come on through, everybody. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Round of applause, please.
We're also pleased to recognize this evening, students from the foreign language competition, and with us this evening, we have Norrie Coyle and Andrew Baker.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're gonna be acknowledging the excellent performance of many students at the James Doyle Oral Proficiency Contest, which is held at the end of February. This is a contest that invites all public and private schools to put forth contestants to have their speaking ability in a foreign language tested. It involves two rounds of interviews held primarily by college professors, and only the top two students of each level for each language are recognized at the county level.
The first person we'd like to recognize is Anosha Ahmed. She placed in second, she placed second, and received silver medal. This is her second silver medal from last year. Unfortunately, Haun Bian is not here today due to her emergency, family emergency, but she placed first for Level 2. This is her second gold medal also. The next person, oh, look at you.
One of the exceptions to the people who's being recognized tonight is Harrison Barclay. He did not perform at the Oral Proficiency Contest, but what he is going to be recognized for tonight is something that, as far as I've heard, is a first for the North Penn, North Penn School District's history. There is a National German exam that's administered at the end of January each year, and Harrison scored in the top 5% across the nation for this. In, from that point, he was then invited to a local interview on a Saturday at Chestnut Hill College. He was one of three of all of these people to be forwarded onto the national level for review, for the possibility of being selected to go to Germany for three, sorry, for three weeks, completely paid for. He's one of 44 students across the nation who did receive this award. This is out of 22,000 participants. So proud of Harrison. So please, if you can.
The next person is Howard Chu. He placed first and received a gold medal. This is his third gold medal. Also, he, we just finished a national exam, and he's scored 100%. So he will be recognized for the first in the country. Next person is Jojo Anna Eck. She placed first for Level 1, also, so received a gold medal, but also she scored 100% for Japanese National Exam Level 1. Congratulations.
Also from the German world, we have Amelia Hein, who received second place for the Level of German 3 at the James Doyle Oral Proficiency Contest.
The next person, Angela Hong. She placed first for Level 01 and received gold medal at the contest. Congratulations. And the last person is Gail Oroki. She placed second for Level 1 and received silver medal. Congratulations.
Another star stood at night. All right, before we move the agenda forward, under other business, should we add student travel with the FBLA, or you wanna discuss it further? Anybody have any impact before I bring the public to the meeting? Anybody? Is this on? Is that on? All right. Do we need an answer? What was the timeframe for their request?
They, they need to commit to whether or not they're going by April 28th.
The public should be aware that under other business, I will add a student travel item for our North Penn FBLA team to go to Nationals. We had 11 qualifiers go, and we will put it under other business tonight. All right, let's move forward. Right now is the time to speak to the board. This is the Audience of Citizens. Anybody wishing to speak to the board, please step forward, state your name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens' logbook for us tonight.
Oh, I am on. Okay. Thank you.
Bill, could you wait a second? Did we actually read that in the update? Thank you. I'm sorry, Bill. I apologize. I just wanted to make sure we were following protocol.
Good evening, and that, my name is William Patch. I live at 404 Bonnie Lane, Lansdale, Pennsylvania, and it's really incredible to see the performance, the depth of expertise that this district has. I'm sure that most districts in the Commonwealth look at our performances and wonder, wow, that is, that must be an incredible group of people there, receiving incredible instruction, and given the facilities and the, the resources to be able to accomplish what you saw. This was in academic, and it was in athletics, and I think our student body is really incredible, and I hope the district really appreciates what all these kids are doing. It's, it's through our effort, but mainly their effort, their will and their passion to go on and be as best as they can be. The only thing I was doing, my ongoing topic is, as you know, the sports and the concussions, and I was doing a little research. And I was doing a little research, and I was a little upset reading a quote, I won't say where it came from, "Football is the oxygen and the lifeblood of high school sports programs." Now, isn't it a shame, even in your address on your, to the public on the website, the football nights? I wish that had just said, "The sports program," and that would have included all these swimmers and, and track and field. I don't know why we have a focus, I don't know whether it's ingrained in the public or in the psychic or TV, I don't know what causes this, but every sport is as just as important, every gender is just as important as anybody in any other sport. And to one sport to garner eight coaches, where I almost feel sorry for the resources and the talent, oh, we have one coach. That's unacceptable. It has to be equal. This has to be an equal playing field. This is why women, so they say, are making seventy-seven percent of what men are. It's not fair. I don't know what the circumstances are, but society and the public needs to be well aware, well aware of the inequities of what's going on. I pointed out, none, none of these, none of these other athletes, I don't believe I saw any, any little cards coming out about the swimming and diving team, but I did see a football card. That's unacceptable. You're saying that you think that they are more important than the soccer team or the lacrosse team, or the track and field, or the divers. It's wrong. You need to make this an equal playing field and, and make it responsive that you supply the same resources as everyone else. And, and I'm going to persist on this, and I don't care how long it takes, until society recommends that certain sports be elevated and some put down because of certain problems that are being found out through scientific evidence.
Bill, Bill, you should be aware those playing cards you're talking about are paid for by the parents and the players and the booster club.
Anyway, they're distributed, and I don't see anybody else.
That's not the school district, I understand that. I mean, anybody can do something.
Okay, anyone can do that. Okay. As we move forward into serious negotiation with our employees, I was happy to see that the board has a focus on the limitations imposed by the state legislature, namely Act One. The index, although we have a relatively low tax rate, many taxpayers find this escalation, slow incremental tax increase, one percent, two percent, three percent, two percent. It's, it's not acceptable. And if it has to go up, every dollar that we spend has to be diligently looked at. Every cost has to be rigorously examined so that every dollar is well-spent. The public is very skeptical of the federal government, they're very skeptical of the state government. At our level, and the participation of every taxpayer can be involved so that we can continue on making programs like this. Every program that we spend money on can be looked at. The expenditures can be rigorously examined and audited. It's very, very critical that every dollar be spent wisely and has a legacy cost which improves over time. I will have to pay my county taxes the end of this month, seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars, which will be followed by thirty-two-hundred dollars to the district, which I don't complain about because I've always said you're doing an incredibly good job with the money that you have, but there can always be room for improvement, always, always improved. I have, in, I've spent sixty thousand dollars on taxes since I've lived in my house. That's a pretty sizable amount of money collectively, and you have spent over a billion dollars in five years. A billion dollars. It's quite a lot of money, a billion dollars. Doesn't sound too bad if you say it pretty close. If you're the federal government, I think that's a decimal-rending size. You know, it's a joke with these guys, they don't even, they're, they're talking trillions. I mean, you need a tractor-trailer to get, get their accounting books together. The problem is, coming to the negotiations and the budget, is that you set the budget and then find out, well, how much money we got coming in. I think it should be reversed. First, we find out what the amount of money that we have coming in, and then we can set about what will we spend. This is all backwards. This is what's the problem with the state government, the federal government, all these governmental agencies, got it all backwards. Know, know what the common thing is? Eh, we can go ahead and borrow it. Stop the borrowing nonsense. If you know you're going to have an expenditure, prepare for it. We talked about spending one-point-nine million dollars. Pretty nice. I guess contractors are already ready with a, with a, with a design program and this and that, and wow, one-point-nine million dollars. That doesn't sound too bad. Five schools? Well, that is an awful lot of money. And you yourself said, wow, we don't have it, we'll have to borrow that money. Well, what are we going to do? Well, you know, I was watching The Waltons, and the lady said, oh, can I call out? Oh, no, we don't have a telephone. Nineteen thirty-four, we can't afford it. That was simple enough. That's how old people used to say, you know what? This is how you make it work. I don't have it. You know, people make very poor choices today. They're doing one thing, well, well, you got a, you got a cellphone plan, how much? You pay three-hundred dollars a month for your cellphone bill, but you claim you have problems, you can't afford health insurance? You have misappropriated priorities there. You need to reexamine your life. We need to plan the budget, okay? Last year, somebody on the board says, oh, couldn't we look into Astroturf? That is the most ridiculous thing I ever heard of. Now, we got another thing. Suppose we did get the Astroturf? Well, I imagine you can get Crawford Stadium done for about a million dollars. Well, where would we be now? Oh, well, now we need one-point-nine million dollars to make the school safe, okay? Multiple buildings. You just did one building? Oh, didn't you think of, oh, we had to do it again? What? How about we do one building a year? Wouldn't that be more logical? I figured it out. Okay? Why not contract? Why don't we just hire some security guards? I figure a hundred-and-eighty-four days at a hundred dollars a day, that's eighteen-thousand four-hundred dollars. There wouldn't be employees with just a contract. And at five schools, it's less than a hundred thousand. One-point-nine million? That'll give you nineteen years of a guy at the door. Ma'am, go in here, please. It's better than a camera, better than a buzzer. It's a guy. Go in here. If you need to go anywhere, I'll go with you. So I, I need to, we need to have the simple solutions. We can't borrow one-point-nine million dollars. You got that? We can't borrow one, senior citizens aren't going to do it? No one's going to borrow money. The federal government's taking up all the money. Nobody else has got room in a room, okay? We need no legacy cost. We need, we need to stop these crazy pensions. These pensions with thirty-year retirements? It's ridiculous. Thirty-year pensions, it's ridiculous. How many taxpayers in this area get to retire at fifty-seven? Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm retired at fifty-seven. I, I take winter vacations. Some poor person stuck up in Lansdale, oh, yeah, I lost my job, I don't really have a pension, I can't afford the medical, looks really bad. These are the people you're representing. I understand that we have a fine faculty, and I know that they want to get compensated, but let's look at this realistically. I think that the inequalities, it's getting pretty, pretty, pretty blatant. I'm just saying, yes.
We get a bill, that's all we get.
Okay, I'm going to move on, so, you know, we got a lot to do here.
Bill, please.
Yeah.
Move on.
Okay. Lastly, I ask the number of students that, that, Ms. Holburn, you look into that. I'm going to look into how many students are actually going to have health insurance. This doesn't mean check in a box. This means you need to show me the copier policy. Who are you with? You got Aetna, you got Cigna? You, you do have health insurance. We need to find out the number of students that are going, they're breaking the law if they don't have health insurance. That little check in a box doesn't work anymore. You need to prove to me that you have health insurance, or you're breaking the law. Safe schools does not include any student with no medical insurance. I pointed you, what happens? Oh, yeah, he had, he had symptoms of something, he couldn't stay home, came to school, oh, he gave it to fifteen other people. You know what? You're going to have a bigger problem with microbes than you got people trying to get in the door, okay? No coverage, no sports. I'm not going to, I'm not going to allow you to play a sport. Now, I think in some of these sports, they don't have any concussions. But to have one sport that hadn't, ten concussions and one spine injury, that's unacceptable. You show me you have real coverage, and we'll talk about suiting you up. Okay? Ten years in football will yield a hundred concussions. A hundred, I'm finished. A hundred concussion, just one more minute of my time, and then I'll yield back. Okay? A hundred concussions, okay? The past is over. You can't accept a hundred concussions? That's not acceptable. You know what? Into the future? Oh, yeah, I can't even remember where I live. Oh, yeah, I started my career at North Penn High School. I played college, and now the NFL? That's national flatline. Thank you very much.
Anyone else, please?
Good evening. My name is Alan Malahowski. I'm a teacher here in the North Penn School District. I'm a resident of North Penn, and I'm also the president of the North Penn Education Association, representing the teachers. My colleague is Susan Linum. She's a North Penn Guidance Secretary, also a North Penn resident, and the president of the North Penn Support Professionals Association. Before I go on, Mr. Patchell, I'd like to thank you for your compliments for our students and our staff. We think we have a great staff and great teachers and great kids, too. So thank you for that. Tonight, Susan and I rise to ask you to table Action Item 5J, Approval of the Medical Program Participation Agreement with the Southeastern Pennsylvania Schools Trust, Item BA5. At the very least, we believe this action is premature. Currently, the district is in active negotiations with both of our units. You are all well-aware that there is great interest among the employees of this district to join the Buxmont Healthcare Consortium instead of CPAS. We've been discussing this informally for over a year and formally in negotiations. In fact, the Support Professionals have a formal proposal on the bargaining table regarding the consortium. By your own consultant's presentation during bargaining, which Susan and I and our bargaining teams attended, we saw that CPAS does not offer you the savings that can be achieved in the Buxmont Consortium through labor buy-in, nor is there currently an established wellness program to help our employees stay healthy while saving us all money through lower claims costs. We need to work to move forward together for the good of our employees, the good of our students, and our community. Premature action on this item would not help to achieve this goal. I thank you for your consideration. Please table this motion. Thank you.
Anyone else, please? All right, let's move forward with our agenda. Recommend the approval of the minutes of the March 20th, 2014 action meeting, as well as the April 1st, 2014 work session minutes. As circuit.
Submit.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions of the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Let's go down to committee reports, and we'll start with Support Services.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The committee held an executive session discussing issues of potential litigation on Monday, March 24th, excuse me, from twelve to one-thirty PM. Also, Support Service Committee met on Monday, March 31st, and discussed the following items. Inglewood Elementary School additions and renovations are substantially complete. Punches are being completed by all contractors. Additional work on gas regulators for the natural gas conversion project was discussed. Also, the Haffield Elementary School additions and renovation projects has been put out to bid. Bids were, we, we opened on April 2nd, and a recommendation, recommendation to award to lowest bidders is on tonight's action agenda. Also, the Energy Performance Contracting, RFP, results were discussed along with a discussion of whether or not to look at some needed renovations at North Penn High School. The committee members asked the administration to look into a phasing plan for potential renovations. Additionally, the administration reported the status of the North Penn High School camera upgrade and the security fence fencing project. Mr. Snyder detailed our, our electricity procurements for the year so far. We did quite favorably on our electric rates in the building served by Pico and PP&L. He also noted that in the building served by the Lansdale Borough Electric, charges were increased zero-point-zero-one-eight kilowatts for the months of January and possibly February. That equates to an estimate four-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety dollars a month. Mr. Strobel gave the committee an overview of summer projects and held a proposed, proposal for secured vestibules, which was previously discussed by the Safe Schools Committee. Approval of the secured vestibule projects also appear on tonight's agenda. Our next committee meeting will be held on Monday, April 28th, at six PM, here at the Educational Service Center. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Any comments and questions from, or to Support Services tonight? All right. ECP, Education, Community and Policy, Mrs. Charnock.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. On Monday, April 7th, the ECP Committee held their April meeting. The agenda for the meeting consisted of several items. Topics requiring action included permission to apply for the continuation of the Keystone to Opportunity Grant, permission to apply for an additional Act 80 Day, approval of the 2014 summer programs, extra duty position changes, and textbook and novel adoptions. If the district's application for KTO funding is approved, this will be the third consecutive year that the district has benefited from the grant. This grant gives the district the means to provide resources that address the literacy needs of children in the district, including professional development, to support teachers in these efforts. The committee also reviewed the summer programs that will be conducted this year. Included in these programs are summer school remedial and enrichment programs, Keystone intervention classes, reading language arts programs for students completing grades K through two, ELL program for elementary and secondary students, and summer library, which will be held at Inglewood and Gwinnor Elementary Schools. Also, adoption of textbooks for grades seven and eight strategic math classes, grades eight and nine American history classes, textbooks for grades 10 through 12 accounting, and grades seven through nine computer applications were reviewed. A novel to be added to the summer reading list for incoming seventh-grade students was discussed as well. In addition, the committee also reviewed a request to move three clubs at the high school to official status. The three clubs, Academic Discussion and Peer Tutoring, Engineering Projects and Community Service, and Science Olympiad are directly aligned with the curriculum. Two of the clubs also combine a service component. The cost of adding these three clubs will be offset by restructuring the middle school color guard program and reducing the number of positions from five to two. The committee also reviewed a proposal to identify, to modify the kindergarten schedule on delayed start days so that both AM and PM sessions would attend. Other items that the committee reviewed were student travel expenses, curriculum cycle updates, and a student travel request. The next ECP meeting will be held Monday, May 12th, at six-thirty.
May 12th?
Yep.
That's on Monday?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any questions of ECP? I would like to know, how you can imagine getting an late start, two-hour delay, you're going to bring in kindergarten anyway?
It's a, it would be a one-hour delay, right?
Well, no, most start days are two-hour delays.
We have both a plan for a one-hour delay and a two-hour delay. If we would ever call a one-hour delay, we would bring in AM one hour late, and PM would be on time. If we, for a two-hour delay, we have an adjusted schedule so that each session would be approximately an hour and fifty minutes, instead of bringing in AM for a very abbreviated session.
You got a lot of public providers of services to our parents.
Yep. That has been, we have a communication plan to discuss that with the providers in the area, and we've also worked out the bus times and so forth with transportation.
Got to be pretty comprehensive.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Any other questions of ECP? All right, thank you. I'll move forward. North Penn Educational Foundation, Mrs. Murphy.
The foundation met at its monthly meeting this week, at which time we shared some great news. The foundation has been chosen to be a recipient of a Phillies charities grant. This means that money raised through a fifty-fifty offer to everyone in attendance at a game will be split between the individual who wins and the charitable causes. The foundation will be a recipient of these funds on May 2nd. This is the first time this has ever happened, so this is really a very exciting thing for the district. We don't know yet if we will benefit from all the proceeds this night, or if we will share with another charity or charities, but no matter what, this is a great opportunity for the foundation. Tuesday night's charity received twenty-six thousand dollars, so we are talking about a lot of money. The opportunity is possible because of the great partnership the school district has had with the Phillies organization over the past several years. And we have Christine and Erin to thank for this. The May 2nd game is also North Penn Night of the Phillies and Educator Appreciation Night at the ballpark. North Penn is hoping to have five-hundred employees that their, and their friends and families at the game to cheer. at the game to cheer the Phillies on. If we do sell the 500 seats, the foundation's president, Dave Kratz, will have the honor of throwing out the first pitch before the game. I know all of the board members have been invited to the game, and I hope you will be there to support the foundation as well. In other foundation news, we are gearing up for our first-ever online auction. This May day, a cry for support will be held on, through, from April 24th through May 1st, and will be an online auction of North Penn experiences, such as an opportunity to watch our MP TV newscast, birthday parties at the planetarium, and many more. More information on this exciting new endeavor is forthcoming. The foundation is also busy planning for its golf classic, which will be held Monday, August 18th, at Pinecrest Golf Course. We are looking for both golfers and business sponsors at this time. Our student representatives, Taylor Young and Erin Hubner, are working on a fundraiser with a local restaurant. In grant news, we are also busy receiving grant requests for the 2014-2015 school year. I encourage all North Penn educators to take advantage of our great program to support innovative ideas in the classroom. The deadline is May 2nd. Any questions about the foundation can be directed to Christine Lubrowski at the ESC. Respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy.
Thank you. Any questions of North Penn Educational Foundation this evening? All right, let's move forward with our finance report. Mr. O'Donnell.
Finance Committee Report for Thursday, September 10, 2014. Our informational items. Mr. Shrocky reviewed all the informational items, and the highlights are as follows. On our revenue expenses and balance sheet report, there's a new format which shows the projected ending balance of, for '13-'14. At this point, it appears revenues will come in over budget and roughly, by roughly $3 million, and expenditures will come in under by about 2.8. The projected increase to the fund balance is projected to be $3.165 million. Our general fund balance reports, year-to-date revenues versus budget are trending higher than last fiscal year, while year-to-date expenditures versus budget are trending lower. Both are positive financial indicators. Earned income tax and transfer tax, it was noticed that February was an unusually high collection month for the earned income tax. Also noted was the fact that the realty transfer tax is trending higher than budget and final revenue should exceed by $2 million that was budgeted. The enterprise, the enterprise fund statements. School insurance and services, it was noted that the financial pressures on the SNS and extended school care are under. Capital project report. Capital project report, capital project cash flow forecast was reviewed at the committee. The report highlights pending capital and construction projects as compared to funds available versus the bond funds and capital reserve fund. Items recommended for the work session, or the actions tonight. The tonight's meeting on the agenda are the monthly budget transfers, access HR contract, and USDA farm-to-school grant application. Under other business, the capital projects planning for 2014-15 was distributed and reviewed by the committee. Debt service. Options for the Hatfield Elementary School renovations bond issue were reviewed by the committee. The committee supported the recommendation to issue bank-qualified bonds under $10 million in calendar years 2014 and 2015 for the project. Further due, further, due to interest rate risk, the process for 2014 borrowing will commence now with public financial market, as opposed to waiting later in the calendar year. Access HR. Software-only contract for 2014-15 for online employee enrollments, and RFP will be issued in late fall for alternate options. Grant writing. Bob Schock by telephone and Pam Gallagher reviewed the USDA farm-to-school proposed grant application. Hatfield, Hatfield Elementary, which has the biggest need in the district, has the 52% free and reduced meals, was served at the pilot school, followed by Oak Park at 50%, and then New York Avenue at 44%, depending on the budget program elements and partners' anticipation, participation. The initial $45,000 is for a planning grant, can be filed up in 2016 with an implementation grant for $100,000, which could expand the program to additional schools, with the hopes of rolling out the farm-to-school initiative to all 18 North Penn schools. Again, some of the items that are here tonight that are on the agenda are the April monthly budget transfers, the access HR contract through eVee Consulting, and the USDA farm-to-school grant application. The next meeting will be here in Conference Room C back here on May 5th at 6:30. The agenda said, I mean, on here it said April, but I just want to make sure that we do the proper advertising, that'll be in May 5th, 6:30 PM, in Conference Room C. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions of finance this evening? Safe Schools report tonight, Mrs. Murphy.
Yes. The Safe Schools Committee has not met since the last board meeting, and unfortunately, the next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee has been scheduled for Monday, May 5th, at 2014, at 6:30, at the Educational Services Center. So, you're scheduling them for the same time?
The committee had discussed that apparently they both looked at their calendars, and what they're indicating, that's the only times they were available. So, the compromise was Safe Schools to be here at 6:30, and Finance to be back there at 6:30.
Can we do one after the other?
News to me. Thanks.
Can we do one after the other?
I mean-
Why don't we set a schedule of Finance at 7:00?
We've had this on the docket for a while.
Why don't we do Finance at 7:00?
I mean, wouldn't you have consulted the committee, at least, before you did this?
Part of the problem was, couldn't get a room, room availability, and when they checked the calendars, they said that was the only time available. No time in April.
Well, no, wait, wait. The date was right, not the time. The issue is, why don't you have Safe Schools at 6:30, and follow Finance at 7:00? You're on both committees, anyway.
Do you want, do you want 7:00?
Yeah, we can do it after that.
Does he?
Works for me, we're going to be here, anyway.
Is 6:00 available?
You want to try to do it earlier?
Yes.
That would work just as well.
All right.
Do it before.
I don't care. What do you guys want?
6:00.
6:00. She has more concerns than I do. I have no problem. 6:00 is fine.
6:00 here?
Yes.
In this conference? Okay. So-
May 5th.
So, May 5th, Conference Room A, here, at 6:00 PM. Agreed? Okay.
Properly advertise it.
Sorry to feel confused, guys.
Sorry for the confusion. I started that.
No, the problem is, we've got to make sure, I don't know if they advertised already, because I know Suzie was telling me that she needed to get the advertisers, make sure that the accounting department does the advertising. So, I don't know if that's in, so-
Just re-advertise it.
If it's not too late. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think it was. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it would have been advertised. All right, I'm going to, any other questions for finance tonight? All right, I'm going to move forward with the personnel report. The Personnel Committee met an executive session on March 31st, 2014, from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM, to discuss matters of personnel negotiations and potential litigation and current litigation. End of report. North Monco Technical Career Center. Mr. Laddick.
We have not had our meeting yet this month, but Dr. Dietrich, can you at least give a five-second update on where the superintendents are with regard to the proposed budget we will be seeing?
I can. The superintendents are meeting on Tuesday morning to discuss the proposed budget. I have a meeting with the director on Friday afternoon, being tomorrow, to review it, also with the Joint Operating Committee Chairperson. So, we're continuing to massage that budget in order to meet the targets that we're trying to establish, to stay within the Act 1 index.
Thank you.
Thank you. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Murphy.
The Board of the Intermediate Unit met on Wednesday, March 26th. The budget was approved for the 2014-15 school year. It was for the first time that 100% approved by the voting members of each school district for every section of the budget, so they were very happy about that. 7,000 students from across the country are participating in the Reading Olympics, sponsored by the MCIU. This year, 19 teams from North Penn participated in the event, and this event was also featured in The Reporter on March 12th. Report was given on the Anderson School. It was reported that enrollment has increased steadily over the last few years, from 18 to 36, to 48, to 59. We have a capacity, I think, for 80 students. So, it's always a concern, but it seems to be doing very well. The Legislative Breakfast was a huge success, with 14 legislators participating, as well as area superintendents, assistant superintendents, IU board members, legislative chairs, as well as members of the Montgomery County, County Boards. The IU is again offering their summer AP institutes for Montgomery County teachers. The offerings are posted on the IU website. Finally, the Eighth Voices of Inspiration Awards will take place on May 7th. North Penn has several nominees. The next meeting will take place on Wednesday, April 30th, the West Norton location. Respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy.
Thank you. Any questions of the Montgomery County IU report? The public should know that the Board met an executive session tonight, April 10th, 2014, from 7:25 to 7:30 PM, through a matter of personnel. All right, let's move forward with our superintendent report. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommend approval of settlement agreements for students 0410141 and 0410142, and 0410143, whose names are on file in the office of the superintendent.
Submove by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the Tax Collection Committee Resolution, appointing delegates from North Penn School District, per Item BA4.
Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Laddick, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the adoption of textbooks, as listed, per Item 14, 14A through B.
So, second?
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to pursue six capital construction projects, secure vestibules, 2014, as listed, per Item 1614.
So, move?
Move, all right. Motion by Mrs. Murphy. Do I have a second? Come on, guys, I want to let it go. It's, I can solve my problems later on, after we do our finance meeting, analyze the impact. But I'm pretty sure what, I know what it is. It's less than $80,000. I did the math. Motion, or seconded by Mrs. Charnock. Any comments or questions about this issue? I did have some concerns, so the public is aware, I voiced some concerns over the financial impact, because we hadn't had the full, full analysis done yet. We've done some back-of-the-envelope math, and I'm pretty secure that it's going to be between $75,000 and $82,000. That's what the cost is for Safe Schools import. That $1.9 million that Mr. Patchell was mentioning earlier, it's actually like $2. What's the financial impact to the district? All right, I have a motion, a second, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the Special Education Plan, 2014, 2000, through 2017, per Item 17-14.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of North Penn School District resident tuition-free, 40 school days maximum, for student 0410144, whose name is on file in the office of the superintendent.
Motion by Mr. Schilling?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Laddick. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to submit PlanCom Part F, Attachment C, which is the post-bid opening notification, to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the Hatfield Elementary School additions and renovations, per Item 19-14.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to submit PlanCom Part G, which is the project accounting based on bids, documents, to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the Hatfield Elementary School additions and renovations, per Item 1914.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to apply for the Keystone to Opportunity Continuation Grant for the 2014-15 school year, per Item 2014.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the Medical Program Participation Agreement with the Southeastern Pennsylvania Schools Trust, per Item BA5, A through B.
Motion by Mr. Schi, by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Laddick. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of November 4th, 2013, as an Act 80 Day for the 2013-14 school year, per Item 2114.
Motion by Mr. Schilling?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? Yeah, I just want to say thank you very much. Agreed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Thank you.
Recommend approval of bids, per Item BA6, A through F, as listed.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bids are approved.
Recommend approval of personnel items, as listed, A through D.
Motion by Mr. Laddick. Seconded by Mr., Mrs.-
Second.
No, seconded by Mrs. Charnock. She beat you. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel's approved.
Recommend approval of the employment agreement with Cheryl AR McHugh as Director of Human Resources, effective July 1st, 2014, through June 30th, 2017. A copy of the contract is on file in the Office of School and Community Engagement.
Motion by Mr. Schilling?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend approval of student travel, per Item BA10.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of contracts, per BA11, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
Motion by Mr. Laddick?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Nobody against? Approved. Let's move forward with our finance report. Mr. Schock.
This is a financial report for the month of March 2014. Cash receipts for February totaled $6,832,816.26. Cash dispersments for February totaled $19,853,997.59, leaving total funds available of $100,295,110.4. End of report.
Thank you. Can we move forward with sanction and approval of invoices?
Recommend approval of dispersments to be sanctioned for the month of March 2014, in the amount of $23,839,836.70, and dispersments to be approved for the month of April 2014, in the amount of $2,49,627.93.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. We're going to move forward with budget transfers.
Recommend approval of February 2014 budget transfers in the amount of $453,970.70.
Motion by Mr. Schilling?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Federal, state grants and other programs, Dr. Holden.
Thank you. As mentioned by Mr. O'Donnell in the finance report, we are asking for the Board to approve the application for the farm-to-school grant. The application, if successful, would give us $45,000 for a planning grant in the 2014-15 school year, and an additional $65,000 to $100,000 for implementation in each of the, I'm sorry, in total over the next three years. So we ask that you approve the application for this grant.
So moved by Mr. O'Donnell. Seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Murphy?
I was saying hi to somebody, but yeah.
You go to an auction, look out. Don't raise your hand like that.
That's right.
All right, I have a motion and a second.